Okay. I'll order this meeting of the Canadian Planning Commission. Without objection, we'll approve the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Okay. By consensus, we approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'm Mick Washington, to approve the comments.
Second?
Second.
Any objections? Okay. Approved. First order of business, this is, we have several matters to deal with in work session this evening. No matters that are not in work session other than pre-report and credit yard and so forth. So if anybody is here for something else, is there, are their agendas back under the clock there?
Yes.
Okay. First work session matter is addressing four dune management plan update. And...
Okay, so this is your second work session on this topic. I put in together a revised staff report. Last month I asked you all to keep your previous materials so we don't have to go through that large printing exercise again. Hannah, our contractor, wrote most of the staff report. We put together some policy language from our current documents and from the John Allen document. Let me make it clear that the policies, the first part of that attachment is policies from the comprehensive plan. Those are the enforceable policies in our comprehensive plan today. The next two sessions, sections from the Rosenfeld document and the Mara document, those are the, what I'm going to call the policy-like statements in those plans. Some of them are written in enforceable language, some of them are almost written in enforceable language, if you're following what I'm getting at. And then that last section is similarly policy-like language from John Allen's report. Language of either reject a policy or could easily be modified to be an enforceable policy. At your last work session, you wanted to focus on the policy component first, have that flow into the regulatory language second. That's a logical way of doing it. So Hannah wrote most of this staff report, so I'm going to ask her to walk you through her parts of this. I guess as a warning, we're going to try to drive you towards some guidance back to us so that we can get to a draft, so you can conduct a public hearing. I know there's a lot of interest in testifying to you, and I believe at some point you want to hear testimony on this. So that's the step we need to get to, to get to a scheduling hearing. And then after Hannah's done, I'm going to conclude with some kind of some timing questions about how you want to handle the three months on this topic.
I have a question, and I'm not sure whether it's best directed, which of you are the best directors to be here to address it. On the first page of our materials, that was under Zupanova sand dune management, I'm not sure why that's the heading, but that wasn't the question.
Oh, okay.
There's a statement, "The Canada Beach littoral cell has a net gain of approximately 253,000 cubic yards between 1997 and 2016." That the littoral cell itself has gained that much sand, or gained, not has gained, but gained that much sand? I understood the type of presentation we had both from Tom Horning and from Dr. Allen to say that basically the same sand remains in the littoral cell and goes back and forth and in and out, but it doesn't accumulate from other littoral cells.
Well, Hannah wrote that, so I'm going to let her address that. Now, I'll see if I can find it.
So that's the sentence that I have highlighted in the Allen report on page 34. So...
I'm not sure what the procedure is here, but just sort of for the record, even though you're not a member of the public authority, but the phone number or something like that, would you say who you are and where you get your mail?
Oh, yeah. I'm Hannah Dankar. I'm a planner with Crest and contracting with the city for the F&amp;P update. Do you need my address?
Do we need her address?
No.
You don't have to have it.
Okay.
Actually, Hannah's speaking as staff here, as a contractor.
Yeah.
So this is not public testimony in the way you would handle it at a hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah, that sentence from the staff report is pretty much word for word from the Allen report, and that can be found on page 34.
And I've got it roughly, almost exactly in the middle of the page.
Yeah. Yes, the first bullet point and the second set of bullets.
So, you're saying that you raised your eyebrows also when you read that?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so we may, I'm not sure whether that's something that's going to inform our policy recommendations or anything, whether, like, maybe somebody can tell you what, maybe not.
Yeah, and I would have to do some more reading around this section to fill in a little bit more.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, there's a whole section about the sand volume changes in the Canada Beach cell and within the Allen report. It's a little technical, but interesting to read, and it has some nice charts to show there's accretion and erosion. Anything else? All right. So, at the last planning commission meeting, we talked about me starting to pull a draft together. So I've been gathering my notes and trying to figure out how, what the draft is going to look like, and I realize it's a first draft, and a lot of it will change as we go through the planning process. And as I was writing, I still had a few more questions for you folks, so I thought that we could just walk through those, and you could point me in a direction to at least get us started, and then as we move forward, we can always decide if something isn't working or we can change our minds later. But to get this first draft done, I want to get some further input. So if you all have the staff report in front of you, I have five main questions. There's five headings. So if we could start with methods, the Allen report outlines two methods that could be used for sanding grading. One of them is pushing sand seaward to be transported by wind and waves, and this is the current, the method that the city currently uses. And then the other method that the Allen report proposes is to physically remove the sand from a location and transport it to an area that's experiencing erosion. So I was wondering if there's a preference for which method we should incorporate into the plan. The transporting it by truck is going to be pretty costly. I mean, currently, the city allows for up to 2,500 cubic yards to be graded at any time, at a time, under one permit, and a standard dump truck holds 10 to 14 cubic yards. So doing solely that method is not practical, but a combination of these methods could be permitted, or just the current method of pushing the sand towards the sea, like what the city's doing now could be permitted. I just wanted to get a feel for what sort of methods you folks are interested.
I guess I have a question, and I'm trying to respond to that, and that is, is there, I probably need to go back another time to read Dr. Allen's report, and he may have said something like this. Is there reason to believe that there are places where we could truck sand to and put it that are eroding now farther south than the littoral cell to cataract that erosion? That the sand wouldn't make its way to if we continued our process of pushing it out where it'll wash away?
I think one of the ideas that Allen proposes is pushing it seaward at a time of year where the waves could help push itself where, even though that's not really the pattern we're seeing at the cell at this time, there's still, some of the sand could make its way further south. But this way, you're getting more sand transported there, and you can plant right away to help trap it or lock that sand down in place. So I think his idea was that you could get more sand in one go.
It seems to me that it's rather cost prohibitive to transport all this.
Yeah, that would be a pretty big challenge. But if a group was interested in doing that, if the city is interested in having it be permitted, there would have to be some sort of process, because there would, I would assume, have to be some sort of agreement between the people getting rid of the sand and the people accepting the sand.
Well, as it stated in there, the Tolavana area is losing sand, so...
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't know if there's any community interest in those two groups coming together and saying and working something out. Obviously, they would have to work on the cost and securing a truck for that purpose, which adds some logistics, or it adds a few more logistical steps if that method, if the city's interested in pursuing that method.
If the city is not interested in that, pushed into the ocean, much earlier with this body, we're given piles of research, and one of the pieces of the research that I found particularly interesting was dealing with the effect of different levels of, different heights of transported sand pushed out into the surf essentially, and its effect on razor claims. I don't see and talk about how much sand is going to be pushed out and how deep it's going to be, but that report, if my memory is accurate, suggested that 15 inches was about the maximal amount you could push onto the four dunes area and affect the razor claims.
And I haven't seen that report, so I can't speak to that. I do know, I mean, Seaside and Canada Beach have both done the grading where they push it towards the sea, and they've been doing that for years, and I don't know the effects on razor claims.
Well, I guess what I'm suggesting is that there ought to be some indication of how much depth of sand is going to be pushed out and sit around there for a while and affect the survivability of the plant.
Yeah, and that's something I can look into, and as far as grading processes, that could be written into it, like sand needs to be spread so it's no more than 15 inches deep.
I'd feel more comfortable with 12, but yeah, something to look into.
Thank you.
As a kind of a response to your request for guidance on this, it seems to be, or for me at least, the default is to stay with the way that we've been doing it, and I certainly expect we're going to get public testimony when we come to that soon enough. Maybe, I would hope, from people down in Tolavana, if they feel strongly that they want to get this sand, and maybe also from people up and down down in the Breakers Point area and so forth, to see whether there's a prospect that would justify continuing to look at the idea of trucking. Just without knowing that, my expectation would be to bring work, but I'd like to hear what people have to say.
Okay, so maybe, with that line of thinking, maybe include it in the first draft and then see what sort of feedback there is, or I'm not sure what others think.
Transporting the sand, to me, seems like it's impractical, especially when it comes to the time of the year that we'd be moving sand, which would be in the springtime, and erupting recreation on the beach, so to me, it seems like the least practical way to approach that. And, you know, the other thing, when you're talking about the sand down in Tolavana, I live down there, and actually, there is a huge sand buildup from Silver Point towards Tolavana, so that sand is shifting, and so I don't see that there's that much of a deficit of erosion in that area unless it's down by presidential areas, but certainly not where I'm at.
And is that a suggestion that we take that possibility off the table?
Well, I mean, that sand is always shifting, and like I say, it's probably five feet deeper right now at Silver Point than it was last year. So there certainly is a build up there, and it's moving on that a little more.
Other opinions about whether we should make that in the first draft, so it'll be subject to discussion. I guess we're not going to prevent people from discussing, from coming forward and talking about it, or combining them or whatever.
Well, it seems to me that it's possible to combine the methods. And trucking sand in 200 dump trucks full, or whatever it would take, for 2,500 cubic yards, trucking that much probably isn't practical, but in terms of filling in places where the sand is blown out, where there are low spots, it seems to me that trucking out a good bit to fill in obvious problem areas to the south might be one way of sort of chump-starting the shift of sand, depending on the ocean and do its minimally effective shifting of sand, pushing it down in the fortuitous area.
I'd like to leave both options in to hear what we can ask to say.
Anybody who feels strongly that we ought to take a pause, I haven't heard anything saying, take it off. Exactly, you got into that point.
Yeah, that's great. So my next question for you is, what time of year should dune grading be permitted? So the 1997 report says that most management actions take place between October and March, even though there's lots of storms and sand tends to move to neighboring properties, which cause some problems. And then the 2017 Allen report recommended May through July as the best time to grade. And just so, as a point of reference, I included Seaside's ordinance language about the time of, time of year they allow grading, and they allow it early spring, March and April, or fall in October. So I just wanted to open up discussions. I know there's a lot of constraints with tourism, and when the city is busy, might not be the best time to be knocking over some sand. So I just wanted to hear some input, if you wanted to narrow the May through July window, if you're interested in maybe opening a spot in the fall and the spring, or what you folks might be interested in.
Well, what is, what's the argument against doing it when tourists are here?
Doing it when?
Moving the sand when tourists are here.
Oh, I think the main argument that I've heard is just that it's busy.
Well, it's probably not going to be that busy where the bulldos are.
Yeah.
I think there's a strong feeling, which I probably share to some extent, but by taking a trip, especially way across the country or something, if you go to the beach and find what's happening at the beaches, a bunch of bulldos are acting around there.
Well, this sounds a whole lot like a movie about the short that I saw a few decades back, where the community was concerned about how the tourists would feel about, you know, a shortcut, but it seems to me that, you know, the, if there's a rationale for a particular period of time of year in terms of actually making the sand go where we want it to go to, whether it's tourist season or October tourist season, the wet and dead period or something, shouldn't be the issue. In fact, maybe it's a good thing for tourists to see what it takes to keep the beach in shape.
Well, it seems to me the overriding concern about maybe you should be doing this is that the stabilization of the sand dunes that have been exposed have to be revegetated, so that's not going to happen if you're doing it in the fall. They're not going to be giving growth to those species in the winter months, and of course, you're going to have much more wind activity and rain activity in the fall and winter, so it seems to me that you're looking more towards the springtime months versus fall months.
And they were talking about the temperature, too, being 30 to 60 degrees, and, yeah, as we've noticed this fall, it's been kind of hotter than that. Yeah, I think the replanting is the big...
Yeah, the replanting, especially if you look at what happened this year, if you were to start planting in July, you didn't have any rain to speak of, you know, in July or this year. So, you know, the earlier, I would say, the spring would be better off in terms of establishing the new plants.
I agree. Why don't you take aim at words, earlier spring?
All right.
Do we not want to leave a window open for that, open for timeframe, because you certainly can transplant plants easier in that section, period of time, and you get some progress in stabilization?
Well, you're not going to get much growth on these plants in October. If they're concerned about stabilizing the exposed areas, it seems to me that you might have to do that in springtime, where you're going to have a lot more shifting in the fall months, so it doesn't seem like it's very viable to stabilize it if you're going to be doing that kind of work in the fall.
All right. So I'll leave it for early spring now, I think, was that the consensus? Or do you want to throw in the early fall?
Well, what do you consider early spring?
So, well, Allen recommends May through July, but let's say, I mean, depending on the year, March or April, like, the end of April seems like a pretty good opportunity, considering tourist season is sort of slow during that time, and, I mean, end of April, you're buddying up against May, that seems like a good time to get plants established.
Funny to me that I can't just roll this off myself, but when do we typically have spring break? I know that's something that...
There are like seven weeks of it, if you have March through mid-April.
Yeah, so that end of April, those last couple weeks in April up to Memorial Day, I think, sounds like a pretty opportune time, and that gives you six to seven weeks.
Mark, you have any notice?
Well, we've historically tried to avoid spring break, which is, Commissioner Russell says it's a multi-week, weekly holiday.
Washington's...
But, yeah, usually in March and April, those are done by the end of April, and so the May-June timeframe is when we see a lot of these campaigns done. This year, it would have been, you know, we didn't get much rain after June, so replanting would have been problematic this year, but usually there's enough rain in May and June.
As early as we can, consistent with not having tons of people there at the time of work.
Yeah. I mean, avoiding spring break is, I think, part of it is trying to put our best foot forward in terms of the beauty of the community, but a lot of it is also just logistics. It's easier to move equipment down the street when the streets aren't full of visitors. It's not entirely for the benefit of visitors. A lot of it is just for the benefit of making these projects easier to do.
Is that your guidance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I can do that. So then, just to keep this moving, my next questions are regarding permitting, and so I have two questions regarding permitting. My first one is that what types of permits and review process is necessary? Currently, you folks hear reviews for conditional use permits for these activities. I was just wondering if that system is working, if you think it could be administrative review, if you guys want to hear it. What sort of review process are you looking for?
My, I don't know how I ended up talking so much, but I think we would get a lot of dissatisfaction from people in town if we handed that over to the administrative side and didn't give people an opportunity to have their say each time there was going to be a dune management, you know, some dune grading.
I agree. So do you like the conditional use permit coming to you guys? Do you like that process? All right. So I'll just keep that a similar process for now. And then my second question is, I know this question has come up as you've been reviewing permits, what about multi-year and repetitive permits? Right now, permits can go up to 2,500 cubic yards, and then anything over that would be an additional permit, permitting.
I think we live with that.
Good with that? All right.
Live with a 2,500 cubic yard in the whip for each permit?
Okay, and then would people be allowed to come back?
I think it would be good to look at what has been done and what the effects are.
Okay. All right, so I'll keep that a similar, all the permitting stuff will stay pretty similar. So then, my next questions are regarding revegetation. So right now, the dunes are pretty dominated by European beech grass, which is non-native and builds tall dunes. And there's been, I've heard some interest in exploring very different alternative vegetation options, so on the staff report on page three, you can see where I made a table with European beech grass, American beech grass that's non-native to Oregon, and then American beech grass that is native to Oregon. And all of those capture sand in different ways and build dunes in different shapes. So it would be interesting, and the Allen report recommends not using European beech grass, so any alternative options, we'll have to work with, Oregon Parks and Rec worked with Jay, who was here last month, and also there are some researchers at OSU who did this research, who would also be able to provide input if this isn't...
Yeah, because I know Oregon State Parks suggests that it be the beech grass, the European beech grass, for this last particular event, so I would look to making sure that they would support what we're saying.
Yeah.
My recollection of what we heard last time was that they would be, if we said that was what we wanted, and I don't remember whether there was some other condition, it may be that they were throwing and going along with our existing rules rather than just what the people up here said, but if we revise our dune grading policies, that they would be receptive to do that.
Could we ask Jay?
I actually did ask him, because he alluded to that at the meeting.
He did, because this is what they said they would require, so I want to double...
That point blank, because this is not the same thing that's happened with that permit appeal, and he said, no. And we'll get him to put this in writing or repeat it orally, but he said, if this, essentially what you just said, if this is in your plan and you're basing your permit decisions on this different planting regime, they would support us. So he was pretty unquital about that, so I'm feeling confident that that's, if that's the direction you want to go, you won't, shouldn't run afoul of State Parks this time around, but we need to get him to nail that down, so I'll go back to him.
Well, and that was the more complex program that was outlined, rather than, you know, do, use European beech grass or use, you know, American beech grass.
Yeah, no, it was a farm...
We had lots of other species floating around, and, you know, land zones and so forth, so that might make a difference as well.
I mean, I think it's pretty clear that most of this, that the European beech grass is what started the building of the sand dunes the way they've gotten to today, and I'm pretty sure in either this report or an other report, it indicated that the replacement to grass would be American beech grass and the native Oregon beech grass, and to avoid planting European beech grass, which is... And to avoid planting European beech grass, which is what's trapping this in the first place. So, I mean, I'd be leaning towards those two grasses to be associated vegetation. Well, it's not as if the European beech grass isn't so all present. It's going to be, you know, tough to get rid of it, that's it. Yeah, it is. But I've been pushing towards trying to have some test plots where you'd be using the grass and see what actually happens with those sand dunes versus what we have now.
So, there is some research on that, and this is why I'll take some talking to Oregon Parks and Rec and those researchers at OSU, because that grass that's native to Oregon doesn't capture the sand as well. So, if the grass is planted and a big storm blows through, some of that sand can move over to neighboring properties, which might not be that popular. So, we'll have to see, that might be healthier for the ecosystem, but what does that mean policy-wise and how do we work with that?
I think personally, I agree. It's possible to mix the species.
Yeah, and that would be working with the OSU researchers, see what ratio they found. Yeah, all of this is from Peter Vajirio at OSU, who has been studying these for years and has contacted me and is interested in keeping up to date on this process.
I'm interested, again, once we get to public input, to have the opinion of people who were directly affected. I have an expectation of what they would have said, and I'd like to hear them say it.
Okay.
And I intend that we will have an opportunity to say it.
Yes. Yes, so I will look into, I'll focus on getting these American beech grasses focusing on the native into the plan.
So, then, also, at the end of that page, they were talking about woody shrubs are associated with more stable dunes. Is that, is that an option that's on the table?
Yeah, so woody shrubs do help stabilize dunes. The problem would be is that they likes more stable dunes than what grasses like. So, if you're constantly grading a dune, a wooden shrub probably will do as well. But if you're doing grading, then you're going to step back and say, we're just going to let this do its thing for however many years. Then putting some shrubs in there to help hold that sand in place with the native beech grass would be an option.
Can you give me an example of what a woody shrub is?
We have willows out there.
But that would grow high, right?
Yeah, and we allow people to trim them. There's also a mudka rose, it's a wild rose. And then, as the people say, there's also a lot of Scotch groom. You like those yellow flowers?
Jerome, yes, I will.
Everybody here is invited to come come down and try to root.
Plant it.
Yeah.
Moving on.
All right, so, we can move through this last part. So, the last part is just about dune formation. And part of that will be dependent on where we go for vegetation. So, height, cross-sectional area, and then the area of the dune. So, at the last meeting, we talked about the base flood elevation be a B plus four. That's the state standard, and it sounds like that's what you all want to stick with. And I would write the plan as be a B plus four, so the next flood maps change.
And that was the place that said twenty-eight feet. And so, I changed that theory, isn't it?
Yeah, the twenty-eight feet you saw was a planned segment that was just addressing a specific site. So, in that case, it was, it was true that...
To that particular...
At that particular location, BFE plus four equals twenty-eight, but it's a broad regulatory tool. No, you wouldn't actually...
It's a little misleading.
Yeah, and I put that in there out of context, and that's why it is misleading. I'm sorry about that. It was addressing just one site, so in that one site's case, it was an accurate statement. But that's not the way you would actually want to write that policy.
Well, and with the new maps, down the pipe, too.
Yeah, the new maps are going to change that BFE in many places. So, in that case, you want to have it BFE plus four, say, which is kind of the neutral language that can apply to any site, any map updates.
The thing that concerned me, and I know you're talking about this, so I'll wait if you want me to.
Oh, go ahead.
Fertilizing, yes. You're talking about fertilizing the primary grasses, and then they're on the next, this is page four. And we're talking about fertilizer, and then we talk on, and that's nine. Then we talk about storm drains and drainage outlets, which kind of worries me about fertilizer going down.
What page are you looking at?
Page four. It would be under policy language in the report, appendix, presidential streets management.
She's looking, appendix A, page four, yeah.
And then you go to four, and you get that written off.
Is that current? I'm sorry to put that in.
No, it's in the, it's in the, well, it's in the MARA report that it talked to fertilizer. And I believe it's also in the Rosenfeld report.
So, I'm a little concerned about seeing those things close together.
Fertilizing is a common practice for replanting beech grass. That's without having that document in front of me, that's my input.
I could add that with European beech grass here, at least in recent years, we have not had fertilizer. It's taken...
It doesn't need it.
Well, in recent years, with the time of year, it's been done, which is mostly in a rainy spring setting. It has not needed fertilizer. But I know that's not true at all locations in Oregon. And if we end up switching species and possibly even times, that may not remain true here. I think we just don't know.
So, I'd like a little more information on what the impact might be for both of those items.
One thing, I, you were connecting that to drains. And I'm assuming that any drain connections there are outfalls from storm drains rather than something that we would be concerned about fertilizer.
It's here.
Yeah, and it...
Where is it?
You're right, we're talking about outfalls, not storm, in storm...
Fertilizer is being washed someplace, it would be washed down into the ocean, which may or may not, if it washes lots and lots of it, that would be a problem.
That, yeah.
But fertilizer could be as simple as dropping an area next to each plant.
Or going and getting it cleaned up. Just kidding.
All right, so my last two are pretty quick, and they're also things that... So, the cross-sectional area, right now, is five hundred and forty square feet. And that's what's measured perpendicular to the shoreline and above the hundred-year still water flood elevation. So, if you're interested in creating larger dunes, we can increase that number. If you're interested in decreasing it, it can go down a smidge. But larger dunes provide more protection in storms, which is important during the winter. So, that's sort of the last two points is how big, how wide do you want these dunes? And if you're looking at the native beech grass, you're going to get some wider dunes, shorter and wider. So, if you're good with what's in the plan now, I can stick with that.
I...
Who would say that's for wider lines?
Less tall and more, and farther from the...
Yeah, that's...
Things to the...
Yeah, that's what these, both of the American beech grasses have been shown. You get a shorter dune, but it goes a little bit wider, even though it would still have to be a B of B plus four. But that wider dune also provides more protection from storms.
Sounds like a direction for a draft, especially if somebody has an argument the other way, you can hear it.
All right. So, those summarize my, or those are, were my questions, so I can get started on my draft. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Mark to sort of talk through the process moving forward.
So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
So, we touched on this at the beginning, but here we are on the twenty-sixth of October. Your next scheduled meeting's the twenty-first of November, that's a changed date. I can't schedule, like, I can't get a draft prepared and a hearing scheduled for that date because we need to notify DLCD thirty days ahead of time before we can schedule a hearing and have the draft then. So, that would imply that we're looking at your December meeting, which would be the nineteenth. So, if, I guess, what I'm suggesting is, based on the input you've given us tonight, we go out, get a hearing draft prepared, provide the notification. That would, you would schedule your first hearing on, we would schedule your first hearing on December nineteenth. And that's how to be your first opportunity to take testimony. Now, realizing that that'll also be your first opportunity to see this, what will probably be a fairly rough draft, since we've touched on these things and you've said, look at those, but you haven't made any decisions.
We'll get the draft reported while...
Yes.
Beforehand, if I understood you correctly, you need to have a draft prepared to send to DLCD thirty days ahead.
Yeah.
We'll have lots of heads up, as long as you make that available to us.
Yeah, we'll have that out sometime.
On the city's website even, or will it just...
Yes, well, it'll come to you directly, but it'll go up on the city's website when we notify DLCD.
Yeah, I think they'll be interested in that.
Would it be possible to do it in January?
Well, absolutely.
And the only reason I was saying that is because the holidays are right there. We're asking the public to come and see what they think. I think that's such a tough time for families who are taking time off from school. I really think it's a poor time.
So, is it for January, so?
I have a...
Okay.
January, December, two, three.
Say again?
The weather conditions make it more difficult in some ways compared to January. And if you get snow in the mountains coming over from Fort Hunderstall, we'll have a lot of people come.
On the other hand, I don't think, if we're putting it out fast or anything, we don't want to...
How many meetings will there be held in public testimony?
Well, that's a good question for you.
Okay.
I don't know.
I mean, I didn't know if it would just be a single month or...
This doesn't seem like something would be a one-and-done situation, but I was going to say something. Yeah, I bet it's that.
Continually, to sort of expect that we're going to have hearings in both of those months. Ask people who want to thought to manage to get them on here.
So, do you want to do December, January, or January, February?
January, February, myself.
I'm not sure that's easier for people to get here from Seattle to Portland, but...
Well, it might make it a little easier for us to get a little further down the road with some of our discussions with OSU, for instance. So, I actually came into this hoping we would have a document to do a December meeting. But if we can get things a little more advanced, January might work better. So, I can work with that.
Just in terms of the draft that you're working on, we might want to have something in the document about encouraging experiment as an option to... Do awfully of grasses.
Okay.
And like, inferring that woody shrubs and so forth, too.
Yeah, I, thank you for suggesting that, encouraging, but I think not boxing ourselves in, as Laura said more.
Okay, that makes sense, we can do that.
Okay, sounds like we're done with that issue for today. The next field session is on zoning questions related to workforce housing. Is there a staff report on that?
Yeah, I prepared a short staff report here, and then there's a couple of attachments there. One is the Affordable Housing Task Force Report that the city council adopted last year. And then, there is a three-page memo, it's attachment B, it says workforce housing potential areas of amendment nine for two thousand and seventeen draft. I've been working with the owners of the C L R apartments that had a fire last year, the recall, that destroyed some multifamily housing there. I've been working with them on their plans for rebuilding that. And they're, they've run into some, I don't want to say obstacles, but there's some hurdles in our ordinance that they have to get past. And I think there's a commitment on the owner's part to provide workforce housing, on the one hand, which is certainly consistent with the direction I've been getting from the council and is consistent with our plan and consistent with this recent affordable housing work that we've done. On the other hand, there are some provisions in our ordinance that make it possibly unnecessarily difficult to accomplish their goals. So, I asked them to prepare some draft language that would address the concerns they've come across in the course of developing this redevelopment plan and bring them to us. And if there's those amendments, there's a package of amendments there, if there are pieces of that or the entirety of it that you want to see developed into a hearing draft, we could do that. Ryan Mar Bartle's here, he drafted that package. We had a couple of discussions about it. You're certainly in the context of a work session, able to invite him up and discuss things, ask him questions. It's not testimony as it would be for a hearing. So, anything he says here, if he wants it in a record of hearing, I'll have to repeat it at a hearing. But in terms of the person who's written that material and the party that's working to get these units replaced, he has a lot more detail on that information than I can provide you. I think you know this already, but the affordable housing has been a high priority of the city councils for as long as I, you know, five years I've been here. It remains a high priority. I'd be amazed if it wasn't a continuing priority when they set their goals again the next year. So, this is certainly consistent with the work program that they've established for me. That is making things, making movements for providing more affordable housing, or workforce housing is the term used here in Cannon Beach. So, it definitely is consistent with the direction the city's been going on this, but it's not something that the planning commission has addressed directly to this point. So, that's all I have.
As I was reading over this material, burning my eyeballs in front of the screen, the thing that struck me was that it would be very useful to have a map of where the R three...
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I, that was entirely my fault, I should have done that.
Because, you know, when you start talking about thirty-two-foot, you know, roofs and screwing around with setbacks and so forth, I think we ought to be able to have a sense of how that's going to impact the environment.
Yeah, so...
Have we got copies of the conflagration, some other documents that we should have on our shelves at home?
You probably don't. It's on the zoning map, it's available online. There's four areas of R three zoning in town, and I'll just describe them. But you absolutely do need a map at some point to actually think about this intelligently, and I'm not going to be able to do it tonight. So, there's some downtown, the C L R apartments, which is the one that burned, is in the R three zone. And there's some other R three zoning near downtown and the residential fringe there. There's some on...
What burned down did not seem, so, Loombury, Florida, I wasn't, I had never paid any attention to that building until it was gone. How many units are we talking about?
I believe there were four units that you should ask the applicant, but I think it was four. The entirety of the C L R apartments did burn, just one of the buildings, multi-building facility there.
Oh, you're saying the four units burned, but...
Four units that burned one building, but there are other units that are still untouched, that still exist there.
Okay.
So, downtown area is one area of R three zoning. There's some on East Dawes over here, where there's a multifamily dwelling or development. There, Tolbona Inn site, it's in an R three zone. And then, on the east side of Hemlock, sort of from Sitka to Anqua on the east side, is mostly, it's entirely R three. So, it's a long strip, kind of narrow strip between Hemlock and Highway one oh one. And Tolbona Park, it's in the R three zone.
You should...
Yeah, you need a map, and I don't have it tonight. If you want to go forward on this, obviously, I'll make a map for you. I apologize for not having done that before this hearing.
I don't think I can make a decision without seeing the map.
Well, you can't make a decision tonight anyway. The only decision is whether you want to continue discussing this or not.
I, I'm ready to hear about it. I'm ready to hear about it. Is the next person up, can be Reymar?
If you ask him to, he's available.
Any objections to your answer for Reymar this one?
There's no way you have anything to show.
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable with a map.
Yeah, I just feel, Reymar, do you have a map?
It's shocking to me, there should be a zoning map in City Hall for just these purposes right there.
There is a map, it's amazing to me.
I would think somebody could find one, I mean...
If you want to take a break, I'll...
I mean, while I'm chattering away.
We'd love to hear from you, but yeah.
You know, Rob, one thing I would say is, you know, this proposed change in building height is one aspect, is just one idea. So, this isn't the major idea, so I would just say that. So, I'm Reymar Bartle, and...
Oh, I'm gonna interrupt you just long enough to say, as far as I'm concerned, you're the boss here, not formally, but you can, if you want to...
I like it right here.
You like it right there. That's good.
I feel like a regular citizen now, it's great. So, I'm representing Mike Clark and Coaster Properties and Coaster Construction. And I think, as Mark indicated, sadly, one of the pods at SeaLark burned down. And Mike started looking into rebuilding it. And Mr. Clark has had a long-term interest in affordable housing, workforce housing in Cannon Beach. I think he's felt kind of frustrated, he hasn't been able to quite turn the key and make it happen. But he saw that this fire might turn into an opportunity. I think I'd be fair and say, I think it's three units were burned, so we're talking about three units, not the four that Mark mentioned. And so, Mr. Clark had some of his consultants and at Tolavana Architects, David Binet, I think most of you probably know David, start working on what some options might be to increase the density. And ultimately, a draft plan has been put together that would allow eight units to be built along the, essentially, the site of the three units that burned. And the main obstacle for, in terms of the city zoning code, for Mr. Clark being able to move forward from the three units to the eight units, is the off-street parking requirement. But somewhere along the discussions with Mr. Clark, he said, you know, he's really interested in taking a broader look at this whole issue about how standards in the zoning code affect the ability of private developers to build workforce housing. So, he basically gave me the charge and said, "Don't just look at the parking standard, look at all the array of standards that apply to multifamily housing and see if you can come up with some considerations, things for the city to consider." So, the document that you have before you is part of that larger charge that Mr. Clark gave to myself, not the more narrow focus of just rebuilding SeaLark apartments. And if you've had a chance to go through the document, generally, there's a lot of literature out there now because, obviously, virtually every community in America, whether it's small, medium, or large, is confronting the lack of workforce housing, affordable housing. If you start reading the literature, it all boils down to a couple of areas that I call density and building height. And of course, the only way really you can reduce units is to be able to get more units on a given piece of land. So, if you do a literature search, you'll see a lot of information as communities look at density and building height. Now, the city has done something along those lines already, and that is that there is no specific density standard in your zoning code for how much square footage of the site has to be applied to each unit. So, in a very traditional zoning code, you will often see something like, the first unit, you have to have five thousand square feet of site area, and then it's, you know, twenty-five hundred. Well, that has a way of very quickly narrowing the ability. So, a number of years ago, the city did away with that standard and basically said, really, we don't care, we, the city, don't care about the number of units that you create, we really care more about the height, bulk, and scale of the building. And so, with that in mind, that...
I'm sorry, the height of the building?
The height and bulk and scale of the building. So, with that in mind, the city adjusted that density standard and said that for housing that's not condominium, that density standard does not apply. So, that was an initial step, and I think it was an important one, to try to make it easier for the private parties to build some more affordable workforce housing. The other part does deal with building height. And so, right now, basically, the city permits two-story buildings uniformly in the downtown, residential, commercial. The one exception is for motels. Motels are allowed to build to thirty-two feet, which is four feet higher, and essentially allows a third story. I guess my pitch would be, you know, if you're really serious about workforce housing, I think you really should consider allowing the same benefit that at some point in the past, the community considered for motels, for workforce housing. This is one of these things, you gotta give up something if you want something. I think the city's, you know, being here forty years, I think one of the best things the city ever did was some of their simplest things, including limiting the height of its buildings. So, I can see the impact of those kinds of things. But I would say a modest four-foot building height increase to try to promote affordable housing, I think that's worth your consideration. And maybe we can take a break at some point. A couple of things I would point out is that, given the location of the R3 zones, that added four feet of building height can be buffered to some extent. So, the area that Mark was talking about, which is the most extensive R3 area in the city, which is between Highway one oh one and Hemlock, so it's on the east side of Hemlock and west side of one oh one, and basically runs from the Fresh Food Market all the way to the last exit out of town. So, that's the city's main R3 area. Now, there are a lot of non-R3 uses in that area, including, you know, the children's center and the Cannon Beach Academy, there's single-family dwellings there, there's triplexes. But that's the main, the city's main R3 area. Then, as Mark mentioned, in other R3 areas right downtown, immediately adjacent to the commercial area, those are actually the two primary R3 areas.
So, the SeaLark is...
The SeaLark is in that downtown R3 area.
It is R3.
Right, right. So, that's the one recommendation on this idea of increasing densi, get more units looking at density and building height. The next major thing that all the studies that look at are the off-street parking requirements. And I cited some numbers for you in the statement. There's a very interesting study that was done in Victoria, Canada, about the impact of off-street parking requirements on the cost and ultimately, the rental cost of housing. Now, every jurisdiction is different, the housing markets are different, so, I mean, that's, those are caveats, of course. But they found that just requiring one more parking space than is really needed raises the price of the mental unit by over twelve percent and two off-street parking spaces by twenty-five percent. And this Victoria study and others found, they went out and actually surveyed housing that was built pursuant to a jurisdiction standard. And those standards vary. Traditionally, it was always two units, two spaces per unit. Over time, cities have adjusted more to the size of the number of bedrooms and so on. And the city had did that in the past. But what they found uniformly was that workforce housing complexes had way more parking than there were actually demand for, or cars parked there. And I thought, well, shoot, we've got a couple of workforce housing projects here in Cannon Beach. I'm gonna see how, what's going on with regard to Shorewood and El Creek Terrace. So, this summer, I visited both complexes at eight o'clock, so pretty much everybody's home. And you can see that Shorewood, actually, there's some, I had some erroneous information at the time, in terms of the number of units, I can get back into those, I don't think it's really material, but they're a little bit different from what's cited in the report, that the average number of cars associated with thirty-four units at Shorewood was twenty-two cars. So, that's three-quarters of a car per unit. And then, at El Creek Terrace, which has thirty-six units, there were thirty-three cars, so roughly one per unit. So, I think, you know, total, adding them together of those seventy units, there were actually, you know, point eight cars per unit. And most of those units are two- and three-bedroom units. They're not studios, they're not one-bedrooms. They both do have one-bedroom units, but the vast majority of those are two- and three-bedroom units. And yet, the parking require, the actual parking units is under one.
At eight o'clock.
At eight o'clock, right, right. So, you know, based on the literature, research, the only, just kind of looking at what's happened here, in this draft, again, are some recommendations for changes that would reduce the off-street parking requirement. Point six-five for studios, one for one- and two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms, we have These numbers are very reflective of the kinds of changes that the city of Eugene made. Eugene went through a very comprehensive workforce housing study a number of years ago, and this is roughly what they came up with. It's very much in line with what lots of communities are doing, although, you know, there has certainly been a lot of controversy about it, and you've probably read about it relative to Portland and so on. Some communities have done away with off-street parking for workforce housing. So, I think this is not an unreasonable point to be thinking about. Now, this is the one part that would directly affect the rebuilding of the SeaLark. To be able to go from three units to eight is to adopt these parking standards. That would allow to go forward. The rebuilding of that part of the SeaLark can be done without these other changes, but Mr. Clark is also interested in some other ideas, perhaps increasing the intensity of the remainder of the SeaLark apartments, and certainly, some of these other changes that would benefit the ability to do that. And perhaps a larger project on a property that he owns would definitely benefit from some of these changes. The next thing to look at would be landscaping requirements. So, right now, the city requires that multifamily housing have thirty percent of the site area in landscaping. And just so, for comparison, commercial properties in the C-one zone are required to have twenty percent landscaping. And in the C-one zone, half of that twenty percent can be what's called hardscape. I know you've probably seen that quite often, maybe more than you want to, which is open space, but it's not plant materials. One suggestion would be to essentially use the standard for commercial development in Cannon Beach, the twenty percent standard, but require that that twenty percent be soft landscaping. So, that frees up ten percent of the site area for intensifying the use of the property to provide for more housing. So, that's the third idea, general idea. And then, the final one is, right now, multifamily dwellings in the C-one zone, you've got sort of a two-level standard. In a mixed-use development, so fifty percent is commercial and fifty percent is housing, then the housing is an outright use. So, just simplistically, first floor, you've got a commercial use, second floor, you've got grounds. That's an outright use in the C-one zone. But, for example, if you wanted to do a hundred percent workforce housing project in the C-one zone, you'd need a conditional use permit. This would, the option would be to permit workforce housing as an outright use in the C-one. And this, you know, this could benefit, this would benefit Mr. Clark, just to be right upfront about it. He does own a vacant piece of property to the east of Akola Square, it's zone C-one. And he's put a lot of effort over the last seven or eight years into looking at a way to make that into a housing project. He's never been quite able to do it. So, this, making it an outright use might be one more thing that would help him, but it perhaps could help others. There's some C-one property along Sunset Boulevard, smaller parcels that could perhaps have some workforce housing on it, so. So, those are the, those are the main ideas.
How necessary is it to have three bedrooms for workhouse or for work?
Well, you know, this is, you know, I, it depends, you know, this is kind of how you look at the issue kind of thing. So, one thing I would say is that, you know, there's all sorts of workers, and I think certainly, for example, what we're look, you know, Mr. Clark is looking at, certainly with the SeaLark, he's looking at studios in one-bedrooms. So, that's kind of where he's looking. On the other hand, I've heard lots of conversations when I sat in Mark's chair and since then, that people are bemoaning the fact that families can't find a place to rent in Cannon Beach. And of course, the heads of those families work and have to support their families. So, you know, I think there is, I think there is room for three-bedroom apartments. I, me personally, I don't think the private market can deliver a three-bedroom apartment with the wage structure in Cannon Beach, but we shouldn't preclude it, and we certainly shouldn't put unnecessary barriers in the way of it.
The Housing Task Course study that the council adopted looked at that issue, and the consultant said, and that task force agreed, and the council presumably agreed with, you really do need a mix of all of those types. You need three-bedroom units that are available to a family with children, for example, and you need studio one-bedrooms for singletons, married couples without children. You really do need both of those ends of that spectrum of workforce housing.
One thing I wanted to get back to that I kind of lost track of, which was, I think, a good question, you know, what's going to be the impact, what would be the impact of raising the building height four feet in the R3 zone? And one thing I would suggest, now, this would only apply to the R3 zone that is the part in Tolavana that runs from Fresh Food Markets to the end of town, but that, all of those parcels, basically... But that, all of those parcels basically run from Hemlock to Highway 101. And so essentially, and Highway 101 has got a 200-foot wide right-of-way in that area, so it's very wide. So I would suggest to you, at least at that location with good site design, the impact of an additional four feet would be ameliorated just by the fact of that particular location. With regard to the R3 area where the SeaLark is located, immediately adjacent to it is the RM zone, which allows 32-foot high buildings. So, I mean, it's, it's gonna blend right in. I, I wouldn't see that as, as, you know, it's not gonna look severe or a major difference.
When I think of that change, I think of the code.
The code?
In Seaside, and what's happened to that height and what that looks like.
Well, I, I think the Seaside, the height in, in Seaside is higher than 32.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, you know, all I can tell you is there are no free lunches. I think we've all been around long enough to know, and you have to decide what's more important. And I think if you're gonna rely on the private sector to try to deliver some workforce housing, you're gonna have to loosen up on some of these rules. Now, like I say, just getting the, just getting the SeaLark done, getting it rebuilt doesn't come into play. Probably wouldn't even come into play in Mr. Clark redeveloping the rest of SeaLark. But it could come into play in, in your R3 zone, in the Tolavanna area, making it more attractive for somebody to think about it, so. That's a tough call, I agree.
When, when we talk about 28 versus 32, and it's only four feet, that's not quite a fair representation.
Okay.
Because that's the peak of, and if you're building a three-story dwelling, I can, I can see the roof getting flat pretty quick. And, and all of a sudden, that drops you down.
That's, yeah, that's, you know, I, you know, the, these are just sketching out ideas. But the idea would be that if it went to 32 feet to the ridge line, that would still require your basic 512 pitched roof. So it wouldn't allow a flat roof building. But you can build a workable three-story building with a 32-foot building height to the ridge line.
You know, in some, in some places in this country, there's a, a kind of dwelling called a garden apartment.
Mm-hmm.
Which is essentially a basement apartment. And, you know, that would be another possible way of having a three-story building.
Yeah, you know, definitions vary a lot, so I might not be right on, right on point with, with what your conception of, of a garden apartment is, but.
There are windows above the ground.
Right, in, in, in many areas, particularly in the East Coast and Midwest, people build substantial basements. And often, those basements either initially planned as, or over time become apartments. We don't really build basements on the North Oregon coast. So you're right, because that's really below ground. And so, in terms of the building height, since you measured from the average existing grade, it has no effect. But the reality is, I, I don't think people are gonna start building, you know, basements on the Oregon coast.
I do, but. All I know is that you don't have to go very far around Portland to hear from a lot of pissed-off people because of changes in requirements for parking off-street in terms of infill that doesn't match up with the neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of angry people.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of people just bug out.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you, you started this post-law talking about one of the best things that Cannon Beach did 40 years ago or so was to have a 28-foot ceiling and building heights.
Well, the caveat that I put out there for you is except for the motels, which are.
I know, except for, yeah, that's right. I may have been an error too.
Oh, no, that was politics. That was politics, and, you know, there's a reason that there's an exception for the motels. And it was, you know, the public process and how things get done. All I'm suggesting to you here is, and, you know, I've heard all of those things about, complain about parking and scale and so on. But again, if, if this is a goal that you want, you have to loosen up on some of these rules, or it's not gonna happen. You know, and, you know, Mr. Clark, in a way, is, is, is kind of a little bit of a proving ground. He really does wanna do some of the workforce housing. And he really does wanna go from three units to eight units. And, but he said, you know, if we can't get this past the planning commission and the city council, we'll rebuild it as, as three units.
Well, and right where your two examples of the parking had to do with cities that have a lot of transit availability, mass transit, where I think we, you almost have to have a car to live here.
Well, I, I know, I know those of us that are well off and have cars sometimes have a hard time relating to what people do without cars. But I think you'd be surprised how many people don't have cars and make it work. And certainly, being able to find a place to live at an affordable price would make their life a lot easier. So, again, sure, the safe thing, when, when there was lots of everything, the safe thing was to require more parking than you needed because land was cheap, what's it gonna hurt? Well, those days are over. I mean, the, the, I, I think the studies are very conclusive. Excessive parking requirements really drive up the price of rents. And even, you know, in Cannon Beach, we can argue about the nature of who lives where and all of this stuff. But the two workforce housing, affordable housing projects, we have, you know, 0.8 cars per unit is, 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 you know, is, is what's shown. And that's very consistent with the kind of information from other places. So, yes, of course, we don't have the transit system that Eugene has and so on, but there is a transit system. And I would say the other benefit that Cannon Beach that does, that is, doesn't apply to Eugene is we're a fairly small, compact town. And you can get around town on a bike or by foot. So that's, that's kind of on the other side of the coin, that's what I push, you know, kind of as a counterstatement there.
Couple of things, I certainly would not argue that they're common around here. But I, I think you know where the duplex is that was built in the past year or so, almost across the street from my place. I think both of those units have daylight basements.
Yeah, those are, but, you know, I, I think those aren't really true basements. I, I, I mean.
Stories that are.
Yeah, I mean, if, if somebody can do it, I think it's great. Because like I say, it, it doesn't count against, you know, if, if you can get units in under the average existing grade, more power to you. I'd say more power to you.
Well, there is a code that controls what you can build underground to, is the basement, how high you can.
Absolutely, the building code comes into effect there.
So, you know, maybe that's another area to look at, is, is encouraging living space in basements by changing the restrictions on which you can build underground, call it, call it basement space or living space.
Well, I, I think in a way, the city already has that because by measuring from the average existing grade, anything you put under the average existing grade essentially doesn't, you know, doesn't count against your building height. So unlike some communities that base their building height on stories, you know, and they say two or two and a half or three, then, then that would be a factor.
But it plays against the square footage overall. You know, I mean, yeah, the point is that there are, there are restrictions that, that encourage people not to build basements.
Right, yeah. Now, I, I'm not that familiar with the restrictions that would be in the building code. My own personal opinion is that's where they would be found. Here in Cannon Beach, I would say there's, there probably are limited or no restrictions because, as I mentioned, there's no density standard for multifamilies that's workforce housing now. So there's no, there's no, you don't lose anything by, by building a basement in, in terms of that.
Well.
And, and the floor, and the other factor.
Not to pick a fight, but, but, you know, the code, you know, definitely makes it undesirable to, if you, if you wanna build a two-story house in Cannon Beach and, and keep it under 28 feet at the, at the height, and you're gonna have X thousand square feet of living space in, in those two floors, that basement better not be living space. Because, you know, you won't be allowed to build it.
Yes, okay, and my, my job here is to, I don't wanna pick a fight with any of you. I respect all your opinions. I, I think this is incredibly difficult thing to do, there's trade-offs to be had. You know, as, as Mark said, you know, this is a very high priority for the city council. I mean, it's been a priority for the city all along. Your comprehensive plan's got a nice litany of things about it. So definitely don't wanna pick fights with you about this. I wanna encourage you to think about it, and free up as many of these rules as possible. Just one, but, but back on that point, I would say there is a difference in the city's code between how multifamily structures are handled and how single-family structures are handled. And I totally agree with you, for a single-family dwelling, if you, if you build a dwelling with a basement, and unless that, that ceiling is under like six, what, six inches or something, that is gonna count as floor area. And the maximum floor area is 0.6, so that is a negative impact. The difference is, your R3 zone, your multifamily housing, the, the floor area ratio standard is not applying to code right now. You don't have that.
Couple more things, one is, I hadn't been, I hadn't never thought about the question, how deep those lots are in Tolavanna that you were talking about. Typically, I don't know whether they're all the same depth, it's probably Highway and Hemlock, although they don't run absolutely parallel. But typically, from the edge of the right-of-way of Hemlock to the edge of the right-of-way of Highway, how deep are those lots?
Boy, I'm not, I'm not gonna give you a, I, I'd be just guessing.
And you're right, they vary, they're wider north.
You know, it's slowly, they slowly come together. You know, if you think about it in your mind, you know, when you go all the way to the end of Hemlock, you're essentially on 101. So there's a taper that happens. And probably the widest area is roughly where the Sandcastle condominiums are right now. That's probably the widest distance between Hemlock and 101. And then slowly, as you head south, it gets a little narrower as you go.
I'm, I'm just, I, I never thought about the question with, with all of this, of increasing the, the number of units on, in, in there. If those are really deep lots, where do you have, are, are we preventing people from putting duplexes in there, for example, or multi?
No, no, in fact, it, you know, do, you know, that, that's in the, the R3 zone, so duplexes are an outright use. Actually, probably 15 years ago, to try to spur some smaller, more affordable rental units, the city actually created something called, that would never be me, by the way, Bob.
I didn't see who it was.
They, they created, it's called the limited triplex. So for an existing 5,000 square foot lot, you can actually have three units on it. So, you know, there, there are some of those smaller scale options there. But again, you know, because multifamily workforce housing is very difficult to do, you know, a lot of those lots have got single-family dwellings on them. Or if they have.
If I owned one of those, I, I started thinking about, maybe I, I wouldn't mind moving a, a few blocks away and building a, arranging for somebody to build a triplex on, on my lot and cashing out of it. That, that would be a motivation.
Yeah, you can do that.
Another question, and I think this is my last one. I didn't notice anything in what I was reading here, but contemplated the fact that people have roommates when they're, especially before they're married, sometimes even after they're married, that, that, are, are roommates then considered a?
You don't count people, you, you, you don't count households, you count bedrooms. I mean, this, you know, so, you know, whatever the standard that we're looking at, whether it's the existing city standard or, you know, proposed standard, we're looking at other communities. Basic unit of measurement for parking is the type of unit that it is. The city's, the city's not in the business of counting heads. And, you know, historically, cities tried to define what a family was, and there'd be definitions. And cities got in all sorts of trouble with that, and it was, you know, an enforcement nightmare. So we're just, we're just counting spaces. We're not, we're not looking who's living in there, thankfully. People make a lot of accommodations, you know, based on their circumstances. People do what they have to do.
There was some work in the planning literature that I saw recently about Minneapolis-St. Paul, which has a very, very large immigrant population. And the, just that it was the large number of immigrants who could be crammed into a space that a very smaller, much smaller number of native Minneapolis residents would have lived in.
There was a time when I was teaching English as a second language, and I think I had a class in which at least half of the class had the same dress.
But, but, right, right, you know, historically, we used to try to define families and have this kind of hair-spitting arguments about what constitutes a family. People look back a way.
Probably gotten harder.
Yeah, it's, it's not gotten easier, and it's just, that was an impossible task to begin with, and that was when it was an easier task. It really is impossible now.
Anybody else?
Well, there's some nice photographic opportunities to reproduce 1900, late 1800 photos out of New York City and how people lived.
I guess the question for us then is, do you wanna see this as a hearing draft? Do you wanna have another work session? Do you want more information on some aspect of this or the other? I did pull out the zoning map, if you wanna look at that. If we do go further with this, I'll, of course, reproduce that for you in a more useful form. But give me some direction on how you wanna head on this.
I really appreciate the dialogue. I would like to have a map and to think about this and drive around and see what kind of impact this makes on everyone who this might affect. I, I'm concerned about people that think they have what they have and then it all changes.
Well, if, if you guys are interested in doing kind of sort of self-guided field observations, I can email you out a kind of atlas to the, the R3 zoning in the, in the city. And that's a way of doing your own research on this, if you can.
I don't feel comfortable at this point deciding on these issues. Plus, I, I frankly think it would be beneficial to open this up to community discussion.
I would certainly wanna do that at some point. I guess my question would be, if we said we wanted another work, work session, this before we went to public hearings, what do you envision that that would be, be, or have we thought about?
I haven't thought about it, obviously, we can overcome this mapping problem, which I apologize for again. You can do some of your field research and maybe have a more informed discussion about these particular locations. Otherwise, unless there's something in particular you want brought forward from staff, I'm not sure what else I would do other than that for another work session. not sure what else I would do other than that, for another work session.
Okay. Everybody want to get the... Brian Brown, would you like to make the, the case for, for having another work session before?
Yeah, I'd like to have another work session.
I guess a map out tomorrow, so that, there'll be plenty of time to work on it.
I, I'm not in a hurry. If anybody have objections to having another work session on this.
It's so quiet.
What's that?
Oh, I'm, I, I love this process. I live for this.
Your next meeting date would be November 21st. If you wanted to continue this work session to then, I would get the map out. If there's anything else you want in the way of background between now and then, shoot me an email, and I'll, I'll try to get that to you for the 21st.
And if I understood and remember correctly, you said we had only one non-work session item for, for the next session?
Yeah.
That means we're not...
Yeah, next, next month's hearing schedule includes one item, so I would expect you to take a half hour, 40 minutes on that, so that would leave time for...
Good, have eight done.
If I could just throw in one thing, I think some, some good dialogue, first of all, on your part is very important, so I definitely get the, you know, this is really the first time you as a group have had a chance to interact and talk to it, so I think that's good. But, you know, from Mr. Clark's standpoint, there is a finite amount of time for him to figure out what's going to happen. You need to do what you need to do that you're comfortable with, but at some point, you know, some dates related to the insurance company are gonna come into play, so it's, it's not an open-ended kind of thing for, for, you know, Mr. Clark being, figuring out what he needs to do. So, by, by all means, have as much discussion among yourselves as you need to figure out what, if any, of these ideas make sense for you, and then bring them forward in the, you know, in the public forum and public hearings to get the community's input. I think that's all good. One thing, I guess, from Mr. Clark's standpoint, that would benefit seeing where we're at is maybe at the conclusion of your next work session, if each of you could kind of weigh in on which of these ideas make some sense to you and which ones don't, that might be useful. Wouldn't have to be anything definitive, but some sense of that might be useful, I think.
Just to give him some guidance that where, where he had, has reason to expect that things might go.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. If you, if you think that this might get to a hearing in December, I would need to notify it before your November work session. So, what I could do, if you think that's the way this might be headed, is go ahead and do that for December. If you're not ready, postponing the hearing is not a problem.
Well, the public can help us decide that a little.
Yeah, well, that, that means you're holding a hearing. So, I guess the question is, is if, if you think this is likely to be ready for a hearing in December, it's November 21st, we're too late to make that decision, so I'll need to know, I'll need to make that, pull the trigger on that earlier than November 21st.
Would you wanna go ahead and set it up that we are committed that we're gonna have a work session in November and a public hearing in December?
We already turned down having a public hearing on dirt and sand in December because of the difficulty of people being... You know, I think what we're talking about here, you know, if you, if you just look at, you know, the, the R3 zone at the, at the south end of hemlock, is we're talking about deciding how that area is going to be used into the future, and if, if we're building, you know, worker housing there, all of a sudden, that land becomes likely more valuable, depending on how many units you're gonna cram on a lot. And it's, it's going to affect the property values for people who wanna build family homes here, or retirement homes here, or whatever, because that, that land is getting more expensive. It's already pretty expensive. Lots in that area for under a hundred and fifty thousand, I guess, but... I think this is, this, this is more than just a desire for the business community to have workers, for the city hall to have living arrangements that will provide professional staff places to live in Cannon Beach, which is a good thing. And it has a huge impact on, on people who are already invested in this community, and on what's gonna happen with a big chunk of, of territory if you start turning, you know, single-family home lots into, you know, leased apartments. I think that people need a chance to vet it, nothing else. And I, it's how I put off doing anything until January, until the business holiday. Hope for a pleasant ending in January.
So, so the direction would be to go ahead with the November work session, and at that, and at that point, you can make a decision about pulling the trigger on that January hearing?
You know, we probably have a little business that would come up in December anyway.
I would imagine so, yeah.
I could go with that, that, okay, but, okay?
Okay, that works, thank you. Thanks a lot.
So, here are you more?
Last month, kind of partially in the context of the tree removal appeal that you, that came to you about Ashley was withdrawn before you heard it, you've got a letter from Joe Balden, who is a arborist who does a lot of work, now is a consultant and formerly at one point worked as staff for the city, Arburists. And he raised some issues, these are generic issues here in this September 21st letter. That was before you at your September meeting, you asked me to schedule a work session, so here you are. I put the ordinance in here, you've amended this roughly a year ago, and I put in the conference of plan policies that relate to that ordinance, and then, not coincidentally, or maybe coincidentally, it was followed by the tree report for the previous month. The only thing I'd add to Joe's letter is, and I haven't been able to brief this part of it, we've also had a comment from another arborist, who doesn't work here often, but said kind of the same things that Joe has said, and he said this in a conversation to me, you know, that the language you use here is really not aligned with the, kind of the language that the industry uses. And he was kind of in a different context, was saying essentially the same thing that Joe said, it's the same in his letter. So, I guess the question here is the same, what do you wanna do with this? Do you wanna roll forward into some sort of a hearing draft on this? Do you wanna discuss it a little more? If you want us to bring Joe in to talk about this, we can do that, too. Sort of really your call.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Joe myself.
I, I read this earlier, I read this this afternoon, and I'm not sure what he's asking us to do.
Well, he, he's referring to the, these criteria for, permit issuance criteria, if you flip the page to the ordinance itself, down at the bottom of the page, 1770 020, permit issuance criteria. That's what all of these tree removal permits hang on, is the wording there. And you don't see it, because you see very few of these on appeal, but we get into, I don't wanna call it hair-splitting arguments, but I've sat there with arborists kind of poring over that word by word, what those mean. And that's what, that's what these tree removal permits involve, is this discussion about what these words mean. So, when Joe is suggesting defining some of these more explicitly, he's, he's getting that, the heart of that kind of, I don't wanna call it a dispute, but these kind of nuanced discussions we have about those permits.
I'd like to hear from them.
Okay. Well, you wanna set up a further work session, and I'll get Joe to attend?
Yes, please.
Would, would it be worth inviting the other arborists who do work here on a regular basis?
If...
This would be a work session context, not a hearing.
Yeah. If, if you and they think that that would be a useful use of time...
Yeah, well, they, they may not, but that's...
Here they are.
Yeah. Okay, I'll schedule that for November also, then.
Okay, the work session, there's over. Additional items, we've got a tree report, some trees we're taking out, a lot of the areas that anybody have, you can say about those? And, are you all in planning hours?
There's one item I wanna bring to your attention, and it's quite a ways off. The, the city council has directed us, staff who are responsible for staffing particular communities, committees, to prepare kind of an annual report for that committee to bring to the council, and it would be a report in your name, and they wanna review those kind of month by month. Now, two groups I work with, you and the design review board, are at the tail end of this process for a couple of reasons. One is that you and the design review board have this very focused, specific, in your case, statutory mission, and you don't really do much outside of that mission. That's not true of some of the other committees, like the Parks and Community Services, for instance, which has kind of a broad mission, their, their meetings often involve kind of wide-ranging discussions on a lot of topics. Am I characterizing that fairly?
Yes.
So, so they're pushing you guys off to the end, so I expect I'm gonna have to prepare a draft report sometime early in the year, but I would like to do is share that with you, have you edit it to make it, so I, I think mine still has to go on it, but I wanna make sure I'm not misrepresenting you in any fashion. I was going to make it a pretty dry, you know, planning commission does these things, the conference of plan and the zoning ordinance are the key documents, these are the members, this is what we did during the last year, this is what we see going forward, something like that. So, I'd look for that sometime in January or February. I guess whether you wanna discuss it in a meeting as a kind of a extra item, or respond by email, it's up to you. We've got quite a bit of time to work on this, I've already started drafting this up. That's really all I have on that. The other committees are gonna be going forward earlier, I'm not sure what Parks and Community Services' schedule is, but I think they're one of the earlier ones to go up.
I think they're in March.
Yeah. I think Public Works and Parks and Community Services were the first two, Tourism Arts might've been the first one. So, you guys are at the end of that train, if, I imagine by the time they've reviewed a few of these, they might have a procedure down, so I might be able to give you a little better information about that. That'll be, that review, that discussion that the city council will be at an open meeting, which I would expect, I'm hopeful that at least the chairman would attend, and certainly all of you could attend.
I, I can't miss this, is this a newer...
This is a new, new thing that they, the council wanted to implement. From their point of view, they have a half dozen committees, boards, that...
Out there doing something, who knows, who knows what...
Out there doing work. And they see, they see the results of your work every month, because they get the minutes, they get the agendas, they see the decisions you made, and on rare occasions...
No idea what, because we're the Parks and Community Committee.
Yeah, so, but they, they, they feel like they don't have a lot of regular contact with their committees, and they wanna at least annually touch base with you. If you have a, something you see that needs to be changed, it'll be an opportunity to bring it up with the people who appointed you. If they are having some concerns about the way you're operating, be an opportunity for them to communicate directly with you. Like I said, your functions are so, in so much detail prescribed, that I don't see that as too much of an issue for you, but it's just that opportunity, and they wanna take advantage of it. So, that's where we're headed sometime in the year.
I have a few words of advice for you. I, I have this theory that verbal creativity, or authorial creativity, is, is, is limited. You can only write so many words in your lifetime, and you can spend those on grocery lists, laundry lists, create an American novel, or reports to the city council. So, you just seem to be drafting a lot these days.
It's the only tool I've got, so that's what I have.
Uh, no other unfinished planning items?
That's all I have.
Go to the order. Okay, we're done.
Thank you.
That's a lot of...